I'll go ahead and call the public hearing to order for December 13th, roll call please.
Johnny Blunt, Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. There are no items scheduled for public hearings, so we'll move right into the right of the scheduled meeting, roll call please.
Johnny Blunt, Lamar Marshall.
Still here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Councilor, would you leave some fresh?
O'Hean and Father, once again, we gather together, those of us who have been elected to take care of this city, we pray, O'Hean and Father, that we are all one accord, that we're all here to make sure that we make the lives better of the citizens of this great city. We thank you, O'Hean and Father, for everything that you have done in our life. We pray, O'Hean and Father, that we are fair and just in everything that we do. These are our blessings, we ask in the name of your precious son, Jesus. To God be the glory.
Amen. I ask all veterans and active military, please run a proper slip. Councilor Hood, you're releasing, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom we do justice.
All right. On the council reports, the first item is 2015-16 audit report from Kyrshna La Grage, LLC.
Yeah, my name's Ernie Jelpe, I'm with the CPA firm of Kyrshna La Grage, and I'm here tonight to present the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2016. As you know, the city is required to submit the audited financial statements to the legislative auditor by December 31st, and we will submit these tomorrow. If I may, I'd like to just point out a few items in-
I'm sorry, do we have copies for the council?
It's a hyperlink.
That was all emailed earlier.
Thank you.
Okay. If I may, I'd like to just point out a few items in the audited financial statements. The audit report or the audit opinion is on pages 1 through 3, and I'm happy to report that we will issue an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which means that we believe, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented, and when you hire an auditor to do the audit, that's certainly the conclusion you want the auditor to reach, so you have a clean opinion on your financial statements. I would also suggest, as you go to review the financial statements, the management discussion and analysis, which is sometimes called the M-D-N-A, which is found on pages 4 through 14, that you want to read through that. It will give you a brief summary of the current year, and also provide an analysis of the current year to prior year. Another item I'd like to bring to your attention is the general fund balance. The fund balance increased for the year ended June 30th, 16, by 1.9 million as a result of some one-time revenues for sale of property, and also some reduction in expenditures. The fund balance ended up at the end of the year at about 3.1 million. The General, I mean, the Government Finance Offices Association, the GFPA, recommends that the general fund fund balance equate to about two months of operating expenses, so for the city, that would be about 3.9 million, and at the end of the year, you were at 3.1, so you were a little lower than the recommendation by the GFPA. It's also my understanding that the fund balance since that time has gone down some, but I also believe that sales tax revenue may be up this year because of the recent flooding, so my recommendation there is to keep an eye on the general fund fund balance and try to get it closer to that GFPA recommendation of 3.9 million. We also issued a report on uniform guidance, since you received federal funding, and I'm happy to report that there were no findings of non-compliance with the uniform guidance. And because it is a governmental audit, we issued a report on internal control and compliance with state law, and we also, for the current year, had no findings there. If you may recall, in the prior year, there were some findings. We had a finding related to the preparation of financial statements and to the reconciliation of fixed assets, and I would like to compliment your finance director, Seda, and her department for resolving those findings and having no findings in the current year. So in summary, you received a clean opinion on your audited financial statements, you did increase the general fund fund balance from the prior year, you removed the findings that you had in the prior year, and you had no findings regarding internal control or compliance for the current year. So I'd also like to thank the mayor and Lacy with the administration and the finance department for their cooperation and assistance as we provided our audit procedures, and I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to prepare the audit for this year. And if, this time, if anybody has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the council? Any public questions or comments on our audit?
We should get closer to that 3.9, we're up 567,000 on our taxes.
Oh, good.
Unfortunately, because of the storm, but fortunately for us, it's likely it'll help us with that general fund balance.
Yes, yes, definitely.
As soon as it's posted, we can send the link out to all council members, and you'll also be receiving a hard copy, as you normally do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricotta sends his regards. He is with his mom, who had a little minor surgery today, she's doing well, but he asked that he come back at a later time to address the council and kind of give an update on the girls' basketball tournament that will be held beginning of, end of February, beginning of March.
February 27th.
Yeah.
Yeah, that week.
Are there any other council reports? Mayor?
As I said, the sales tax was up, $207,000 the month of October. Also, I attended the regional planning commission today with Robbie Miller, and we've been working on some drainage on the Old Baton Rouge Highway, which has moved into an overlay, which as of today, I had talked to Jeff Russell, and he agreed that he would try to expand the project to sidewalk as well as bike path as well, so we may have to come up with some matching funds, but as I told him, let's just do the project complete and get it over with if we can, so he's going to work on that for us, so I think that's going to work in our favor. They also approved the University Avenue environmental to continue with $30,000 that they put towards it to do the environmental study.
Is that the expansion?
That should open up the corridor for economic development for us from university all the way to the back of the airport, so that's big for the city Hammond and the surrounding area. Also, the contract with Barbie Tallo, we're still negotiating, she was in Tennessee a week prior, I was in Vegas with the air show last week, Andre is out this week, so we should wrap that up at the beginning of next week and have a contract to present to you next, next meeting, January. And other than that, you know, I hope everyone's enjoying the Christmas lights, that's our cities work so hard, put up. Yes, or you have a question?
I had a question about the, about the first one on the drainage. Now, we approved capital dollars in the budget this year for that project, so I'm assuming that at some point, if we're not able to get that done this year, I want to make sure that we're able to, we talked about, it was approved by the council to get that work done this year.
What I'm hoping is we're going to be able to take those dollars and match it completely to the state.
I guess the point is, I think we put enough in the budget to do the project without any match.
Any damage there?
Just the drainage itself.
Please answer. Appropriation of the capital project was given from Timber Lane.
Please tell me about your name.
I know your name, I just want you on the record.
Appropriation, the capital projects was to extend the work from Timber Lane, the low area in Timber Lane, down to Old Baton Rouge Highway, and neither east or west, we met with the highway department maybe a month ago, not quite a month ago, and they are agreeing, or at least they're preliminarily agreeing, to change out the crossing near Latter Day Saints, which is less money for us, but they, we have to put up a match for that work, and they're expecting that crossing, without the other improvements that they were contemplating, to be around 250, so we'd have to put up a quarter of that, so that's 100 and something thousand we have. We would, that would take care of the crossing, but we still have to get from Timber Lane to the crossing, so the answer to your question is yes, but we got to get the crossing in before we can do any of our work.
Okay, so I just wanted to-
And it looks like, maybe just, that's the first I've heard the report, looks like that's on the, that's on, got a green light for them to change out that crossing where we can tie to it. That's why I didn't answer your text, by the way.
Oh, I was, thank you, okay, I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any new businesses that would like to be recognized? If everyone had an opportunity to-
They're here, Q seafood, we're Tiger Food Mart now.
Okay, we'll call you, just one minute, thank you. Has everyone, if everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of November 22nd, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Old Business Item Number One, Resolution to Ratify Award Bids Received November 18th, 2016 For Sewer System Improvements For Year 2017, Project 616-11702, Chuck.
These bids were tabled at the November 22nd meeting because of the lift station site was not, had not been properly, or not been turned over to the city, so that now is, it'd be item four on your introduction of ordinances. However, I would recommend, you do have a bid summary, matter of fact, the low bidder is with us tonight, it's only one in the room wearing shorts, I think, yeah. The low bidder was Lawson Benet, the amount of $319,230.20. It was in excess of what we budgeted. It primarily is a replacement of the old Lowe's lift station over by Ross Downing Chevrolet, we're moving it to a new location next to the Enterprise site, and we're extending sewer to Chauvin Drive, which is a commitment the city made 2008, and we're extending sewer down to the existing Lowe's lift station, and we're going to pump to across the road. And the second aspect to this is extending sewer to pick up additional services on Airport Road. Right now, we have no sewer south of Airport, south of 190, so this is Airport Road, you've seen the development going on right there, close to 190, these people have requested and have signed right of ways, and we're going to lay sewer, and I assume they're annexing or already annexed, I don't know where the situation with annexation is, but that will pick up that corridor, so that's going to be a pretty good commercial corner, I would hope we get a good, some good sales tax there. So these are kind of like two locations, and I recommend awarding to the low bidder, Lawson Benet, in the amount of $319,230.20.
Any questions for Chuck? Any public questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Chuck. New Business Item Number One, Resolution to Approve Q Seafood Deli Located at 1705 Fagan Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, obtain a permit to sell packaged HiLo alcohol, the owner is Tiger Food Mart LLC, Ms. Jenny.
Good afternoon. This is an existing business that's located on Fagan, it's about, what, half a block behind Don's Seafood, if you're not familiar with the, where it's at. They have had a change in ownership, and they were previously selling packaged HiLo alcohol with the previous owner, so with the change of ownership, we are asking that they be allowed to sell HiLo. They've met all their specifications that we've required, and we do have a representative here tonight, if y'all have any questions or need to talk to them about, about it, and we'll ask them to come up.
Yes, please. Can you state your name and address on the record?
Beverly Perry, 14429 Artie Drive.
Amy Gibson, 4304 North Belleville Road.
Y'all co-owners?
We employees.
Okay, well, we'd like the applicant for alcohol permits to come before the council so we can basically put them on the record, make sure that you understand the laws concerning sales of alcohol to minors, and know that the police will be checking, they have a pretty active program to check for sales for minors, so we just want to make sure that you guys understand that.
Yes, sir.
No, I think we've had managers in the past, so y'all, y'all met, I mean, are y'all representing the owner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, as long as somebody's on the record, I'm, I'm okay.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item Number Two, Resolution to Approve Budget Change Form Number 1704, Transferring $70,000 From Sewer Repairs Dakota Iowa Project 616-11702 To Sewer System Improvements For Year 2017, Project 616-11405, Chuck.
Yeah, this is Budget Change Form 1704 is what it looks like, it's hyperlink, it's basically taking $70,000 from the Dakota Iowa Sewer Improvements, leaving $93,000 there to allow us to do the additional work on Airport Road, which we did not have originally budgeted, so this is a $70,000 transfer. We do leave $93,000 there, and Jason and I have not talked about it, but we're going to bore that stretch behind those two, those houses, so that will be more than enough to, rather than open cut into everybody's fences and so forth up in the rear, this is pretty much from Chris Broadwater and Judd Matheny down to the intersection of General Pershing. They'll set a manhole at General Pershing, set a manhole back at General Patton, and bore, and then we're going to have to get in there somehow and tie in services, which is going to be a lot of fun, I hope to be out of town when that happens. Anyway, that's another project, that'll come up as soon as I can get the, the SSCS done, the cleaning TV, they've not been successful, cleaning and TV, and it's so full of roots, they can't get in it, we've tried chemicals, we've tried a lot of different things. They were scheduled to come in August the 15th, and as you can well know, we didn't get them in August 15th, and they're still not here to do that work, to do that cleaning TV work, but we expect to get them as soon as we get two, three weeks of dry weather. Now, they said they've caught up, they've done all their flood damage work throughout the Florida parishes, and they'll be back in the, to do the Dakota, which is off the subject, because this is really, I'm just trying to explain, that we're not hurting on Dakota and Iowa. So this is a transfer, it's a direct transfer in the 616 fund, which is sewer, the Enterprise Fund, Sewer and Water Enterprise Fund, it's no new, not a new appropriation, there won't be any additional funds coming out of that account. This is a move from one project to another. Sir?
I'm just listening to you, I'm just wondering if you were going to be, give us any more of an explanation?
Do you want more? I can give you a lot more. How long, how many one you have?
I miss you, Chuck, we haven't seen you in a while, so it's good to hear your voice.
Come up, Ms. Louise.
Sir?
Got a question. Comment.
Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. I just don't understand, Dakota Iowa is-
Dakota is the street that runs along St. Albert's, that's Dakota?
Yes.
It goes all the way to the canal, and Idaho, huh? I'm sorry. Idaho is the next street over?
Idaho, it says Iowa.
It should be Idaho, that's my mistake.
Okay, sorry.
Iowa's over by you.
Yeah, that's, I was-
Over by the run house.
We don't ever get any improvement over there, we've been promising drainage for about six years, and we're still flooded to now.
Well, based on this agenda, Louise, if you leave Iowa in there, then it would go there. You may not want to change it.
I was sort of happy, but I didn't-
You should have left it alone, we could have probably approved.
I would ask, if you would see, we need to change it.
Yes, you need to change it.
We have to.
In terms of the ways-
I would ask for motion to change it to Idaho, so there's no confusion.
You could have had it.
Too late. Confusion's harmful.
I'll offer an amendment to change the, in the resolution, change the street Iowa, Dakota Iowa to Dakota Idaho.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved to amend.
Motion to approve Resolution Two.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item Number Three, Resolution to Approve Change Order Number Three On Sewer Rehabilitation Infiltration And Flow Repairs Project 616-31401 In An Amount Not To Exceed $85,000 For Dixie Court Rosewood Sewer Repairs, Chuck.
Yeah, we have an existing contract with Institute for Technologies, and we have a point repair and sewer companion to that project, and this problem at Dixie Court and Rosewood has been ongoing. We do have some work scheduled next week, I think it's next week, excuse me, in front of the bowling alley, excuse me. However, when we did a little further research in the last two weeks, there've been quite a number of calls, Guy Palamro has asked to plug us into that mix, because he's been getting a lot of service calls. We find out that the sewer line on Dixie Court, which is only about 220 feet long, is very shallow, and the surfaces are very flat, and that every time it rains, nobody can use in their sewers, so we're going to relay sewer back to the north, eventually tied into Church Street, in other words, it's going to go the other direction, but in the meantime, we're going to set a grinder, duplex grinders, a reversible duplex grinder lift station there, so that these people don't have this problem for the next hour or longer. I put this here, it's unusual that you don't have an exact number, I do have a number, but I have to get the contractor to quote it and to turn it in as an official quote, and we just got the price on the pump station yesterday, so I don't have anybody's final numbers yet. We have all the, we know what we're going to do, we know exactly what we're going to do, I know how much it should cost, but I don't know what they're going to quote us when we get the quotes back, because every item in this particular part of the job is not in the original contract. So I've got to get a couple of items bid by the, or negotiated with the contractor to add this work. So it's the 200 block, I believe, of Dixie Court, and it's going to run from Clark to the back cul-de-sac of Dixie Court, and eventually it will run all the way north to, to what we call Arkansas Frozen Foods, pump station number one, probably when we get $200,000, we'll. This will take care of this for a while, and then if we can appropriate more money next year, we'll take care of it permanently. So I recommend approval so we can move forward, not lose any more days getting this work initiated.
Motion to approve.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number Four, Resolution to Accept Work As Substantially Complete On Conversion Of South WWTB Oxidation Ditch 2014, Project 616-11003, Commencing A 45-Day Lean Period Withholding 5% Retainage.
Yes, this is our grant, million dollar grant, we got it from the state, the city put up around 200,000, is that right, Lacy, something in that neighborhood, and the other million dollars came from the states as a grant. We've been kind of holding off, we have about $20,000 left in the grant to do some other things around the south plant that would help, but the state has declined to fund any of the additional work we want done, because in their opinion, it's not, the initial scope of the work for which the grant was funded has been completed, and this is an expansion of scope of work. It's lights, putting up lights, they said, you didn't ask for lights before, why you want lights now, so it's not a big deal, we've just been waiting for two months for an answer, and we got the answer, and the answer is no, so we would like to close the project out and put in grant requests for next year, so we can get that, get it meet thresholds for the 2017 block grant program. So I recommend acceptance, we're withholding 5% retainage, because the job is in excess of 500,000, we can't hold more than 5% retainage, and it'll take 45 days from the clear liens before we can disperse the retainage. So I recommend acceptance is substantially complete.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Chuck. Number Five, Resolution to Accept Or Review For Review Or Report To The Zoning Commission Concerning Proposed Expansion Of The Hammond Historic District, The Zoning Commission voted to refuse to deny expanding the district, Lacy.
Tonight, what you are preparing to do is just accept the report. This has been a very lengthy process, taken up this year. What you have in your report, we'll go through in just a second, but Andre felt it was important for us to set a timeline for this. Basically, by accepting the report tonight, you will then have 90 days within which to act. You may either introduce an ordinance to expand the historic district, or you may introduce an ordinance to deny the expansion of the district, but you will have 90 days from the meeting tonight, the acceptance of the report, going forward, within which to act. So what you will find within your binders are all the things that we have done over this last year concerning this project. First, you have a table of contents and a timeline at the very beginning. The timeline explains everything from the point of view authorizing the committee to be appointed back in last December to the current date, all the public meetings and publications that have been held and had to describe the input, the decisions, and the different ways that this has moved from the historic study committee to the zoning commission, and now to your table for decision making. As part of your report, you have, the attorney memo section has all the, there's two main memos from Andre Cudrain that describe the process, the overall process of expanding the historic district. Much of this is outlined in state law, and that's why it's different from our normal planning and zoning activities, it has a different timeline, and it has some different requirements in terms of public hearings and input. So the first memo that you'll see is his overall explanation of the process. The second memo that you'll see from him explains some of the critical questions that we have gone through this process to better understand going forward. You'll also see a quick fact sheet that has been updated to reflect what a historic district is, how this impacts property owners, that was mailed out earlier to property owners and is now included in your packet. You'll also see the original, when planning and zoning, sent it back to the study committee for more information. That's all in your attorney memo section. The second section of your report is the zoning report, this is the most current report that came from the zoning commission, with their recommendation. You'll see a copy of their meeting minutes, a map of the proposed expansion area, and the suggested language to uphold the zoning commission's recommended, recommendation to deny the expansion. The third section of your report is the full study committee report. This report includes a description of the study committee's recommendation to approve the expansion, a map of their proposed expansion area, conflicts that they see between the historic district guidelines and those of the residential preservation district, otherwise known as Bankers Row area, and meeting minutes of all the meetings that they held, I think there were five total meetings, if I remember off the top of my head, in, in that packet. The fourth section is the city's outreach, this includes all of the letters that were sent out from the mayor's office to the property owners, all who may be impacted in the original area. Contains the meeting notices, we did some postcards to try to help people remember the meeting dates, and we also did a survey response card that was sent by certified letter to all the potentially impacted property owners to gain their input about whether they were in favor or against the expansion, and any other comments that they had with regards to that. In the final section of your binder, what you'll see is public comments. The first part of that includes a spreadsheet that summarizes all of the survey cards and all of the positions that people articulated in the public meetings that we have had thus far on this matter. It also contains just a brief summary of the comments that were held during those public meetings, and those who are in favor and opposed, or questions that were asked, what their concerns are. Behind that spreadsheet, you'll see all the email correspondence and phone calls that were received by City Hall and planning and zoning during this process. were received by City Hall and Planning and Zoning during this process. So, you'll see the detailed information provided by many property owners of their positions and their questions, and kind of what we have gone through during this year of understanding the process and moving forward. So, with that said, that is your report in full. It contains everything that has happened from the beginning point to the point where we are now. Enjoy your reading over the holidays.
Lacy, thank you for a very thorough report.
You're welcome.
Help us, I know for me, make an informed, educated decision.
As any other public comments are received by City Hall, we always forward those to whatever body is currently making a decision about it. So, if there are additional public comments received, whether those are via email or phone calls that we receive, those will be forwarded to you as soon as they are received.
Any questions for Lacy? Any comments? Any public comments or questions? Intertain a motion to accept the report presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution to purchase from Arco, a generator upgraded, weather enclosure and automatic transfer switch, ATS for lift station 10, and a generator fuel tank upgraded, weather enclosure and ATS for lift station 39 for $57,065.96. Attachments, Charles Roach.
The reason I'm up here is because this is going to be purchased primarily with grant funds. This was a grant from the Ponchartrain Restoration Foundation that you guys had previously approved. We had talked about lift station 10 and 39. 10 is at CM Fagan and South Morrison. 39 is out there behind the Winn-Dixie Warehouse Distribution Center. There should have been attached two quotes on page five, if you're looking for an itemized breakdown of the costs per generator, that's what you'll find on page five. These are older quotes, but these are under state contract, and we have confirmed, Janice Rousseau with Water and Sewer has confirmed that these are still good prices. I actually spot checked some of those prices myself on the state contract. They are good prices. We will be spending about $1,900 more per generator for an aluminum enclosure, and according to Janice, this is to protect the generator against sewer gases, which tend to corrode the standard metal enclosure. So, this is typical of what we do. The total for both generators is at 57,065.96. One will be natural gas. That's for lift station 10. The cost on that will be 28,0967.90, and for lift station 39, which will be diesel-powered because of its location back there, kind of in the woods behind Winn-Dixie, 28,098.06. And so, we're asking for your approval so we can move forward with the purchasing process because this was over $30,000.
Any questions for Charles? Any public questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Seven, a resolution to transfer $24,800 from general fund 100 balance to personnel, Personnel Consulting Services for the comprehensive classification and compensation study, Lacy.
This is being brought forward. I made a mistake and thought this, these funds had already been budgeted. This is a salary study that we are required to perform every two years according to ordinance, and we left this out of the budget. So, what we are asking you to do is take it from the general fund balance and award it into the Human Resources Department. Loretta Severin will be overseeing this contract. She presented the bids quite thoroughly at the last meeting. We have not yet signed a contract, just so you know. So, and with your permission, we will go forward with appropriating these funds and then sign the contract to go forward with the work.
Any questions for Lacy?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Introduction ordinance to public camera, number one, introduction of ordinance to amend the Hammond Code of Ordinance, Chapter 14 regarding the fire prevention code.
I am not Richie Neal. I am here on his behalf. He had another thing to take care of tonight. What we are doing, you'll see the red copy is marked up on your hyperlink. We are basically setting in motion for the Hammond City Ordinance to follow state guidelines, and when the state updates their guidelines, ours will automatically be updated. We, it will not require an ordinance change on our behalf. This also brings us into compliance with the national codes on fire safety.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for December the 27th, 2016.
Chief Neal will be here for that public hearing.
All right. Number two, introduction of ordinance to declare movable property a surplus and not needed for a public purpose in providing for a donation to benefit public safety. Janice Carter.
We're asking council approval to declare two Avalanche GT bicycles, which was once part of our bike unit for the PD, which was no longer active. We're asking to declare it surplus property. Upon declared approval, we then ask that y'all authorize the mayor to donate one bike to Wildlife and Fisheries and the other bike to CNN Railroad.
Motion to introduce.
It's not their normal bikes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing set for December 27th, 2016.
Thank you.
Item number three, introduction of ordinance to approve expanded conditional use request by Emile W. Nettles, Emily, I'm sorry, Emily. I did the same thing earlier. To allow sales and consumption of alcohol in conjunction with a salon spa located at 200 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Suite B, in accordance with site plan dated 10/14/2016. Historic DDD recommended approval with condition by zoning commission. Trace.
Good afternoon. This is a expanded conditional use to allow sales and consumption of alcohol for a salon and spa, specifically for just their customers. This is located at the Square 71 building that was just constructed. It's going to be in the upper story on the corner, and the zoning commission made a condition that this is only for their business, and if they were sold or the...
Closed.
Closed, whatever, yeah, this would no longer be in effect.
Motion to introduce. Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Public hearing set for December 27th, 2016. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Item number four, introduction of ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for the acceptance of property for lift station and acceptance of sewer servitudes for the new PS number seven lift station site. Chuck.
This is pump station seven. You just awarded a contract to build that. This is a 25 by 25 site on the north, just immediately north of the Enterprise car place on Morrison Boulevard. We're moving the old, old station from the canal next to Ross Downing to a new location. It's been donated. All we had to pay for was a survey, and anytime the, the city acquires real property of any kind, you have to acquire it by ordinance. So, in the old days, we'd just sign a right of way and record the right of way, and it would become the city's. But according to Andre, we'd, we have to go through an ordinance. It has to be, so this is an acceptance. There was no, we didn't have to pay for the site, by the way. It was donated.
Who donated it?
Ed Hoover. Or Steve, or Peggy, or one of them. I don't remember which. Somebody in the Hoover family, or all of them.
Ed would probably say Peggy. Ed would probably say Peggy.
Probably. I think he signed Anamor Properties. I don't really know who the chief operating officers are. I think maybe Steve did sign it, but I'm really not sure about that.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Motion approved. December 27th is public hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Aye.